I would give it uh one more minute because I don't see um. One second. Alright, so we can actually try to adopt the agenda, hang on. Co-president Si, I know you said that the agenda before, do you remember what time? I think it was yesterday.
Yes, I said the yesterday. Go me forward to you again.
Yeah, please do.
Just sent it, please let me know if you're receiving.
Not yet, give it a second, sometimes it takes a minute. Yeah, I got it. I got it. You can go ahead. For sure.
And do you want to begin? Uh, the last council member just, I mean, the other council member Angel came in.
Okay.
Hey. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, it is Wednesday, January the eleventh. Um, for eight o'clock, what now is eight oh six P M uh for the special meeting this evening. All right. Um, this meeting is being recorded. Um, we are going to begin um roll call. Recording Secretary Montevan, are you there to begin uh roll call, please?
Yes. Hi, I'm beginning roll call now at eight oh six P M. Ms. Christie Angel.
Present.
Ms. Constance Assiedu.
Here.
Ms. Celia Green.
Present.
Ms. Ayesha Husband. Ms. Patricia Jewitt.
Present.
She handle that, no, you support her, just such an awful thing.
Joanne Jones.
Present. You're breaking up.
Sorry, I got that as present. Um, Mr. Shemel Lawrence.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence is gonna be on later, he's in transit. He's in transit, so you can't pick up right now, but he he did assure us that he's gonna come on later. He'll be a little bit late, cuz he's in transit.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Ms. Christie Montevan, present. Mr. Angel Morales.
Present.
Okay, Mr. Craig Spencer, I see he has indicated he's present in the chat, but he can't unmute. And Ms. Amy Ming Sai.
Present.
Okay, we have ten council members present, and we do have quorum.
Thank you, council member Montevan. Alright, so from there we go to an appointment of the timekeeper. Would any council member like to be the timekeeper for this evening's festivities? Alright, I'll ask you, would any council member like to be a timekeeper for this evening's um meeting?
Co-president Green, I'll take timekeeping.
Not a problem. Thank you, co-president Si. Okey-dokey. Uh, next, we're gonna have a moment of solace. For all who have lost, uh, and all who've suffered heartache or tragedy this year, uh, this past school year. Um. So we ask you to bear with us with a moment of silence. Thank you. Alright, thank you, everyone. Uh, we're gonna go on to um adopting the agenda. Does anyone um wanna make a motion? To adopt the agenda, I'm gonna suggest that you make the motion to adopt the agenda. With the discussion and vote for the candidates for administrative assistant to be moved to the end of the session. Only because that's something, the vote has to happen in the public, but the discussion uh does not. Discussion usually happens in executive session. So, um. Would anyone like to make that uh motion? To adopt the agenda? With that change? Would any council member like to make that motion with that change?
Motion, so move.
Thank you, council member um Asidu, it's moved by council member Asidu. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, council member Montevan, so it is clearly moved by consti- uh, by council member Constance Assiedu. And it is seconded by council member Christie Althabom. Okay. Can I get a roll call vote to adopt the agenda?
Okay, I'm starting the roll call vote now to adopt the agenda with the change to add the discussion and vote for A A candidates to the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. Christie Angel.
No.
Ms. Constance Assiedu.
Yes.
Ms. Celia Green.
Yes.
Ms. Patricia Jewitt.
Yeah.
Ms. Joanne Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Shemel Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Christie Montevan, yes. Mr. Angel Morales.
Yes.
Hey, uh, Mr. Craig Spencer, I see his yes from the chat. And I see Mr. Lawrence also wrote yes in the chat. Um, and Ms. Amy Ming Sai.
Abstention.
Hey. I have eight votes for yes, one no, and one abstention. The motion has passed.
Thank you, council, council member Montevan. Okay, so we're gonna go into the discussion, the selection and vote for the top five S C A capital plan uh project requests. Uh, Ms. Councilmember Si has sent out the ones that were gathered from the various principals throughout District Seventy-Five. I think there was a couple that came in today, but nonetheless. Uh, so council members were in possession of them. Uh, does anyone have any suggestions from among the uh the ones that were collected by the council? And also, um bear in mind that safety uh and accessibility are two of the things that would push it towards the front of the line in terms of being on our council's top. So if it's a definite safety issue, if it's an accessibility issue, uh, if it's something really pending. Those, not that all of them are not pending, but if it's something that's really pending, uh, and that is S C A eligible, that will push those things to the top of the line. So does anyone have any suggestions of the ones that we have received? Okay, Mr. Spencer, I realize you, can you, can, yeah, sorry. Are you only, are you able to? Sorry, are you able to unmute?
Greetings, blessings, happy new year. Um, pleasure to be here. Thanks for all you taking the time. Sorry, my uh uh camera isn't on, I'm about to switch to my laptop. Um, just for public record, um, uh, I am the co-chair of the capacity committee. But due to my work schedule, I wasn't actively involved, so I would like my co-chair, uh, fellow co-chairs of the capacity committee, uh, Mr. Lawrence and uh council member Asidu uh to chime in in terms of uh, co-president Si's suggestion for the record before we make a vote. Uh, because as as committee chairs in my absence, I wanna make sure their their um uh acknowledgement, their opinion is for the record before this council takes a vote. Thank you.
Okay, you're, thank you. Uh, Ms. Angel, please go ahead, council member Angel.
Just a quick question. I know that there was like at least sixty of these that came through and that the committee had mentioned that they were going to compile it the way that we had it last year when I mentioned about pulling up the template. Because it's extremely hard to go through sixty pages versus just that one format where we just highlight, you know, the main ones and we're able to narrow it down quickly. I don't know how we can go through sixty, sixty submissions without the list, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't understand.
I understand what, I understand what you're saying, and I I realize you did send an email, um, I believe twice saying about the um populating, sorry, populating the form, yeah?
Yes.
But the form was not sent to the principals. Um, the form should have been sent to the principals, because that's how yours normally it's it's done. And then the principals populate their section, they send it to us um at the council email, and then um from there, we put, we take all of those S C A forms and put them into one form and stuff. So uh, if you would like, because I understand what you're saying. We can um but like all, all of these things are still in consideration, put it this way.
Yes.
The only thing we need is the top five, so if if there was something you all had read through in the past that you think makes it top five, we can do that, cuz but we only have until the thirteenth. I don't wanna have to push this particular, I I understand your concern. That's why I said if anybody has one or has something that they think is outstanding.
Is there any way to compile them before the thirteenth? Because the list, I know Ramona had to physically do it one by one, you know, like you pull it off of the form, you type it in, that kind of thing. Is there, like, if I'm asking for something that just can't get done before the thirteenth, that's okay. Um, is it something that I can jump in with the committee if we do not get it done now? Cuz I feel very ill-equipped because I haven't gone through all sixty. I was waiting to get the spreadsheet to go through it like we did last time. So I don't want to not represent schools or not be able to speak correctly to what, you know, the sixty principals did submit.
Mm-hmm, understood, understood. Um. What I can say to you is that if you would like, we can compose, my thing is, we can do the um populate the form, right? And do that, do it that way. Uh, but, and all of them will be considered and stuff, as long as, like I said, they're in uh, into S C A's hands, and so it's just the top five that they're really talking about for the thirteenth, but everything else gets considered whether or not it's in by the thirteenth or not. Um, if you would like, uh, since it might be easier, like you said, to populate the form first. We can um populate the form, but then we would still have to have another meeting. Just to, and it would be up to people's availability to have that other meeting to get that vote. You know, in other words, if somebody works on it tomorrow, by the next, by Friday, we will have a meeting, it would just be, it wouldn't be a night meeting. It'd probably be something today, so that we can shoot, as soon as it's finished, we can shoot it off to S C A, at least those top five.
I think something like that might need to happen. I just don't wanna like have a school or someone fall in a gap because we didn't, you know, we missed a piece of paper or we didn't see something cuz it wa- all wasn't compiled.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask for, uh, I see your hand is bulinas, but I gotta take the council members first for this part. And whatnot, so, um, if you can wait for a moment. Uh, does any other council member have any uh comments or consideration on this particular um part at the top? Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, uh, I definitely think, uh, what you just said makes sense. I also wanna say that last year to help us move things faster, what we did was we picked one for each borough. Therefore, each borough got one of the five picks, so I would like to see that repeated this year also.
Okay, uh, if no one is opposed to that, is everyone in in league with that? Okay, I see a thumbs up from Christie, but I didn't get a response from um, from council member Angel. Okay, councilman Montevan responded, and council member Spencer responded. Okay. Alright, so. Uh, and council member Jones responded, thank you. Um. So I did not see anybody register any opposition or any abstention, so thank you, uh, council member Jewitt. So that seems like the way to move forward. In that case, I think we can move on to the next section, but before we do that, uh, Ms. Belinas, did you still want to ask a question or?
Yes, I'm sorry, I know I am not a member. Um, I was very much looking forward for this meeting because um I'm working with uh three council members and with the wing and the Bronx Borough President um helping on some schools in here in the Bronx through R S O A participatory budgeting and other initiatives for the schools in the Bronx. And I need to know, um, I know that I am not, you guys are not gonna disclose to me what schools are gonna be involved in this project and whatnot. There's one school, it is not my personal school because it's my nephew's. I am not gonna be telling anything regarding that school because I don't know if anybody from that school is over here present.
Yeah.
But um, we're working with them, with the council member in the Bronx Borough offices and the budget um director. Um, the school is in dire need. And we are looking for, uh, we're trying to get like five million plus. And this is a massive, massive project, and we are trying to get all this done. And we just wanna, I wanted to find out if there's a way that we can, I can know this, or it's gonna go directly to the principal of that school.
Yeah.
Are uh, are you asking if if we as a council have sent the um, the information for S C A requests?
Yeah, well, no, I know that um, that the principal already, uh, when they did the the R S O A, the initial one that was done by the Bronx Borough Office, the president, um, when she did it in October, and then she did a new one uh, an information session in December, on December the fifteenth, I was present, so the uh the extent, the deadline was extended from January the twentieth to the thirty-first. So there's some project, the project is massive. So we were trying to get the funding through discretionary funding. It is high, uh, it's it's our, it's a lot more than a million dollars. It seems like it. We do have, we had a meeting yesterday through participatory budgeting. It's not gonna be feasible. It's not gonna, perhaps it's very likely that it's not gonna be in the ballot. So we're trying to get funding through the Bronx Borough President and through the council member where the school is located. So this is gonna be very difficult because we need to know if the school, we don't want to be, make, I wanted to make sure that we have all our eggs lined together, cuz we need the funding and very likely that, I know it's a fact, that all the funding has to be in place before anything takes, breaks ground, you know what? You know exactly what I'm talking about.
I will say this, we have, we as a council do not control what picks S S C A has. We can just put forward the five top voices that this meeting is about. Uh, if you come on the eighteenth, uh, I believe that there's a presentation by S C A on the eighteenth. That would be a better.
I'm aware of that one. Was it gonna be with Mr. Megan?
With Mr. Who?
Uh, Brian Megan.
I don't know. I'm not sure, but but the eighteenth would be a better meeting to act at both.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I I do have another question, perhaps, uh, I am jumping the gun. I do know that S C A is um, is building another campus in the South Bronx. That's why I was also asking if S C A is presenting here, so.
They're not presenting here today, they're not presenting before the eighteenth, so.
That's right, that's another thing that I needed to know. Okay, that will be all. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak to you guys.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so, uh, because we, a big, alright, so council member Angel. I'm gonna ask if you wanna make a motion that um the top five S C A uh be thrown up until the form is populated and we can reconvene.
I move that the uh top five S C A picks be postponed until the form is populated for our five boroughs, and then we can reconvene on January. A date to this too?
Uh, yeah, yeah, you have to, cuz today's the eleventh, Friday's the thirteenth, so. It either have to be tomorrow night or um.
Or are we voting?
Friday morning.
Before we, um, cuz do we check to see when people could, if they, if we would even have the people that could be there for those? Whatever.
Even if without that, we, even if with that kind of meeting, we would have to do, we need at least forty-eight hours, so it would not be until Friday.
Meaning the meeting itself. Okay, um, so I would like to postpone the top five um request for S C A until the uh five boroughs form with the principals' request is populated uh, with a meeting to take place on let's see, January next, this Friday, what's this Friday's date? I'm sorry, this is like the longest motion.
Friday is the thirteenth.
Friday the thirteenth, are we stating a time for this in the motion? I'll rephrase it, Christie. Are we, are we looking, are we gonna do like a regular six-thirty again? Is that what we're putting in the motion?
I don't think we can do that, because we would have to get it in by close of business for S C A. I'm assuming that they close the businesses probably five or five-thirty for them. You would have to have it before that, so even if we had a four o'clock meeting just to go through the picks.
Also, earlier, earlier in the day, we need to do it. So how early do our members gonna be available on Friday to go through the S C A?
Um, I have no, yeah, but we do need at least six people available. Um, and because it is the thirteenth and it's covered under um, the suspension, the extension of the suspension of open meetings law, it can be completely burdened.
I can make myself available, I just need to know when I need to 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 be there to help out.
Hold on for one second, uh, Ms. Montevan, you had a question?
I just wanted to um let my availability be known that I am actually not available at all on Friday. But um, if six council members are available, I'm not opposed to the meeting taking place without me. I just know that I will not be available.
Mm-hmm, alright, if you, if, if um, you happen to go through the forms or the submissions, you can always send it in, uh, send in an email that you would like to be considered.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay. So, um. I'm sorry, you were saying, um, council member Angel before you. Uh, this, uh, council member Si has her hand up, so give me a second. Council member Si, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna jump in and um say that if we do call for a special meeting for Friday before five, five-thirty, we will not have enough time for the forty-eight hour public notice to go out.
Okay, um. I, the, the most I can say is, we could try to ask um S C A if we can do it on the eighteenth, then we'll push it forward to the eighteenth. Cuz that would give us time to populate the form, go through it, and at the meeting, that would be the first vote. On the eighteenth, before they even do their um presentation. I'm gonna ask council members, any suggestions?
Would there be an alternative if, I'm sorry, Mrs. Spencer, did you wanna speak? You can speak first since I've spoken already.
Thank you, Treasure Angel. No, I I didn't have my hands up. Uh, you put out the motion, I I respect your your space.
Um, thank you. Is there a way, if if I heard you correctly, that if we don't come together to do the top five and the list is submitted anyway, is there a way that maybe once that, the the Excel form is compiled, that we do like some kind of doodle form or some form where people, where it can record the people's tops to see if they're even the same or anything? I I can't really, I don't know how to try to make sure everyone has a voice um before we turn it in. I'm not sure. It could definitely be like some kind of poll, you put in whatever the school, and we could see what those numbers are. Maybe the top five is the top five, um, and that would be an easy res- Maybe the top five is the top five, um, and that would be an easy resolution, but plan B, but I'm not, I'm not honestly sure.
Um. I really don't know what to say. I know, we don't have the forty-eight hour, so that's kinda out. Do people wanna do a, oh, best I could say is, does somebody wanna do a Saturday meeting then? And that's, that's not even worth it until we talk to SCA, to be honest, to see if we can do, um, if we can get it in by the eighteen. I think that might be the alternative. Let's ask and see if they would be willing to take, since they're coming anyway, if they would be willing to take it on the eighteen. Does anyone have? Go ahead, Craig.
Um, I believe um, Treasure Angel just had a motion, she'd have to rescind it before, if uh, if I understand uh, um, the motion is correctly, she'd have to rescind it and then I guess we'd have to, or alter her motion.
Okay. Uh, council member Angel, are you willing to alter your motion?
Uh, sure, I just need the, you know, to mo, I move that we postpone the top five votes for SCA until the form is populated and to another date to be decided once the council has been advised.
Okay. Um, can I get a second to council member Angel's uh, motion? Mr. Spencer?
Uh, yeah, Treasure Angel, can you uh, just add that uh, until the council's advised by the SCA? Um, is that, do you have an objection to that? If you don't have an objection, then I'll second.
We can add by the SCA at the end of it, yes.
Then I, then with that addition, then I second the motion.
Thank you, council member Spencer.
Can you repeat the motion for me, please?
The motion is to postpone the top five votes, um, you know, for SCA requests until the council has been advised by SCA.
Um. Chair Green.
Go ahead, council member.
Put in the motion that who is going to actually turn the list around, just so that we're clear that it is gonna get done. Should we, should we put it back to where?
Don't necessarily have to because I, the, the um, the Capitol Plan Committee didn't get a chance to.
Okay.
But beforehand, but they will do it now, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Alright, so it was moved by council member Angel and seconded by council member Spencer. Uh, Ms. Montalvan, uh, do you, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, we are doing a roll call vote on the motion to postpone the vote of the top five SCA requests until the council has been advised by SCA. Ms. Kristy Angel?
Yes.
Ms. Constance Cecidou?
Yes.
Ms. Celia Green?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia Jewett?
Yes.
Ms. Joanne Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shemel Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Christine Montalvan, yes. Mr. Angel Morales?
Yes.
Mr. Craig Spencer?
Yes.
And Ms. Amy Ming-Sai?
Yes.
Okay, we have ten votes for yes, the motion has passed.
Thank you, council member Montalvan. Okay. Moving forward. Moving forward, next is a discussion of CCD seventy-five's outreach analytics. So I am gonna turn that over to Ms. Angel. Council member Angel?
Thank you. Would I be allowed to screen share?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll give you privilege.
Thank you.
You should be able to share.
Thank you. Um, okay. Here, I just wanted to, um, in the last meeting, uh, I was not present, but I did wanna walk the council through the capacity, excuse me, the outreach insights from December. Um, there was some concern about the statistics, what was going on with our outreach with the parents, so I wanted to pull this up from our council's website and social media. Just in brevity, um, when we lost our AA on the council, we actually lost twenty-two hundred about or so emails when the list was lost. So from the um, back to school events and things of that nature, at the beginning of this school year, we did do outreach in all five boroughs and we were able to basically come up with nine hundred and at least seven people to, you know, rebuild the list. Um, and as you can see, traffic over time, our website had no traffic from December, November thirtieth, twenty-twenty through September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the website domain was taken away, so it wasn't, it could be accessed through a at Wix um, website, so it wasn't really visitable. So seven people joined the website and only thirty-six people visited within that timeframe. As you can see, from June through December twenty-twenty-two, the numbers definitely increased with the traffic over time and with the user activity from September all the way through December. So this is a closer view of the different numbers, as you can see on the side. These are new and returning users. I wanna let everyone know that we are having a really good um, turnout with people coming actually from Google and from direct hits with the um, newsletter and the reminder links and things of that nature. As you can see, our returning users before was only thirty-eight and currently right now, as of December, it was two thousand one hundred and forty-seven, so that's a ninety-eight point twenty-six percent increase. Um, now, traffic by reference, our major source of traffic comes from online research. In the past six months, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four unique visitors have found us online and seven hundred and twenty-seven visitors came directly from typing in the council's website. As you can see here with new visitors and returning, there are more than six thousand seven hundred and seventy page views from new visitors and four hundred and seventy-six from returning. For the numbers from September through November, we, um, I know it was mentioned that they wanted to see what had happened in the last six months. This is where we have here. As you can see from September twenty-twenty-one, it goes from eighteen all the way up to four hundred and eighty-six as we were building the list for new or returning visitors, for new visitors. So gradually, um, we have increased with the listserv and engaging parents to come back to events and committees and the council meetings. I did also take the liberty of pulling up our Zoom participation because um, it was stated that we are having a little bit of fluctuation with the visitors. And so for the last six months, as you can see, it's kind of remained the same, somewhere between like the seventies and the hundreds, but mostly we kind of land on like in the actual thirties numbers when people kind of stay, but this is the numbers of people who have registered. These are the reports from Zoom and these numbers are the actual attendees who have come to our meetings and the numbers for the last six months. Uh, for social media growth, our Facebook reach, we had to start a new Facebook account as we did lose our Facebook account with um, the last um, term. So that has a reach of five hundred and twenty-one people. Twitter has seven hundred and twenty-one, Instagram has six hundred and forty-seven, and the website has eight hundred and ninety-one contacts as we are building, well, this was eight hundred and ninety-one last uh, month. I do have great news in that now that the entire council is able to access the council's email. I've taken some days and have been doing some digging and going into the council's cloud and I found several emails from years ago for parents that were able to put back in. There was about fourteen hundred of those, so we only ended up losing about eight hundred uh, emails from our MailChimp um, that we lost. So with Instagram, we've gone up a hundred and sixty-one percent. With Facebook, we've gone up three hundred and forty percent. And with Instagram profile visits, we've gone up seven hundred and sixteen percent. So I just wanted to, you know, give a little touch point, so people can understand like from the loss of our listserv, where we are now and how we're attempting um, to grow. Um, and that would be the end of that segment for me, unless you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Angels. Do any of the council members have any questions?
If there are no questions, I can, oh.
Mr. Spencer, go ahead. Council member Spencer.
Uh, blessings. Thank you, Treasure uh, Angel. Um, I think um, in this challenging time as we come out of COVID uh, and has, and um, as D seventy-five parents, we adjust to our lives. Um, it's uh, important that um, uh, as outreach chair, um, we share these numbers on a regular basis at our calendar meetings. Uh, especially in light of the fact, uh, elections will be five months from now, uh, and that way it gives uh, our community, not only our community, uh, but the, those in the uh, CECs where there'll be D seventy-five parents, uh, one per um, CEC. Give them an idea in terms of what they can quantify, they bring to the table. Um, so my comment is just, um, I appreciate the effort. Um, I know this is challenging, um, because we have a lot on our plate as D seventy-five parents and I just hope that this council uses this going forward, uh, to empower us more. Especially in line to the fact that we have more of our parents that's gonna have a say in what our community does uh, come next school year. So uh, thank you for your efforts, Treasure Angel, um, and looking forward to future updates.
Yes, I absolutely don't mind um, adding that to the um, outreach updates that we do monthly. Thank you so much for that. Um, I'll wait for, I think, um, Chair um, Green, Ms. President.
Co-president Si, go ahead.
I just wanted to um, appreciate uh, council member Angel who does our outreach here on the council um, of the items that she's shared uh, during, you know, this year of the term. Uh, but I also want to just um, echo um, council member Spencer as to um, this current election cycle where we will be having um, new sets of uh, D seventy-five parent leaders uh, in the local geographic districts, one to thirty-two, and so this will um, give parents in District Seventy-Five as well as our uh, community, school district, parents, the opportunity to know more about us and also know about uh, our children uh, who are in District Seventy-Five programs and what resources are available. I also wanna just um, applaud the work that she put on council member Spencer's page for the ad hoc election communications page and the homepage of um, just the wording of um, this election two thousand twenty-three for the next term. Um, how to run, how to vote, how to get involved, uh, eligibility. Um, and as uh, the election application has already started, um, that will allow parents to get to know us and, and we have, have an interest to join us uh, on District Seventy-Five committee meeting, not just here on citywide, but the new opportunity towards uh, the thirty-two other seats in the geographic uh, local districts. So I just wanna say thank you and um, thank you, council member Spencer for uh, the pushout. Co-president, go ahead.
Thank you, co-president Si. Does any other council member have a comment or um, a question? Alright, hearing none. We are moving on to discuss CCD seventy-five's twenty-twenty-two transfer of CCD seventy-five file folders and MailChimp listserv. Uh, council member Si, is that you or is that uh, Ms. Angel or who is that?
That's me. I briefly did go over it um, in the forum, just saying that, you know, when we lost the AA, we did lose, you know, twenty-two hundred emails, et cetera. Um, so that part was covered. Just to um, finish my last portion, um, as I did miss the last meeting, I know it was brought up in regard to um, me having the password, how I received the password and um, that it had never been done before or something, so I'm, I was a bit confused, I'm not gonna hold you about that. Um, because in March or April of this year, um, as we were working with social media, um, I did create social media, I did share those passwords and I was given the password for Zoom in June. I never knew until I listened to the last meeting that Zoom was connected and the same for the email. I knew that the Zoom and the uh, Microsoft Teams for interpretation were the same. That is it. I've never accessed the email, I've never had a desire to. Um, but I was given the password so that I could work on being able to push us out live on our website, on YouTube and on Facebook and also because we were not as a council able to get access to our videos since I started the council. And so I had set up a WeTransfer for the council, but it was never accessed. So what ended up happening, you know, once we had the power empowerment for the conference, for the parents and things of that nature, and the balls were rolling, I was given access so that I could download the meetings that we do have because Zoom will delete them every thirty days and we had missed a lot of meetings at the top of our uh, tenure. So I was given permission so that we could stay up to date on social media, stay up to date and post on social media for the people who missed those meetings and so that we can get synced up to go live on our website. So I just wanted to clear up um, just what my usage was of the passwords and where I did use them. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Angel. Does any other council, oh, I'm sorry, Craig, you have a, thank you, council member Angel. Uh, Mr. Council member Spencer, go ahead.
Appreciate it, co-president Green. Um, and uh, for the record, due to my work schedule, I wasn't at the last meeting either last Wednesday, so I don't wanna speak out of term. Um, I wanna tread lightly with my comics, with my comments and um, uh, give all due respect to all parties here. Um, uh, Treasure Angel, you had stated that um, uh, passwords uh, were given to you. Um, and like I said, I wanna tread lightly. My work schedule is is um, not stable, so I'm, I'm here when I, when I am, when I, when I am, when I can be. Um, I just want to, if someone other than uh, the co-presidents are getting these passwords, um, I just want, hopefully that it's on record, uh, at a business or a calendar meeting that this is going to be exchanged uh, to cover our, our, our collective butts. Um, so that way it, it's, it, it, it ties up any loose ends or any um, uh, misaccusations. Um, so I just wanna use that, use this time to comment as a caveat that I understand, um, Treasure Angel, what you do, both as treasurer and outreach chair is vital to this council. Uh, I just hope that the co-presidents have it on record that uh, it was presented to the council that she's getting this, no matter the capacity of how she, what, how she needs it. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Spencer. Go ahead, council member Angel.
Um, I do just wanna um, put it out there that um, both co-presidents and Ramona and the D seventy-five council were copied on June first, two thousand twenty-two. Um, uh, moving forward, if I do get any emails and the council is not full copied on it, I will just send it to the full council or just bring it up in a meeting to make sure that we are in full transparency. Thank you.
Whoever, Angels, you mean June or July first?
June first, two thousand twenty-two. I was given the access.
Alright, June first would be Mr. Spencer and Mr. Lawrence.
Correct, yes.
Okay. No problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Does any other council member have any questions or comments before? Thank you. Does any other council member have any questions or comments before we go on to the next topic? Right, see, go ahead, Ms. Lawrence.
Yes, I just wanna give some clarification of what Ms. Angel's saying. Yes, she was given access to the Zoom platform, which was a separate entity from the email. What was talked about at the last meeting was not the Zoom. The way it was presented to us was like we were in the email account. So I just wanna be, you know, clear, uh, we heard what you said. Uh, but the way it was given to us, okay, was like you was using an email uh or whatever reason. And uh as for the Zoom, we understand that and that was talked about in the previous uh on time when we was given it to do what you needed to do, what reactivating again. The next thing I wanna point out is we keep saying that um ever since we lost our AA, this amount of things was lost. As I said in the email, I think we need to go and look into that computer that's there before we start saying that out there publicly. Because I do know and I could vouch for Ramona, she did work titles before she retired and transferred those records. Now, once again, it was never a a a setup appointment where leadership, which was me, myself, Mr. Spencer, and the two new co-presidents ever came together to be able to say yeah or no. So I just wanna be careful how we say that. And as far as Facebook, Facebook as uh Co-President Angel should know, it was hacked. It was not lost. Uh, and Ms. Padona said that somebody hacked it, but I thought that we had recovered and uh it was something that you and Ramona was working on, Ms. Angel, but I gotta re- go back to my emails from last year to see if that's what I hacked it. So, thank you.
You're um, you're right, Mr. Lawrence. Our website is what we lost because the domain was hijacked and someone wanted us to pay over five hundred, six hundred dollars to get the domain back. So that's how we didn't have a website for a year. You are correct in that our website was attached to a council member and when the council member left, we lost access. So that's when I recreated the usernames and passwords and sent it to the council so that it would be a business profile and would never have to be attached to a person so that um we don't lose that again. But I did also wanna address, um, right after we changed membership, I did go into the office. Um, that was around the end of the year, so we were doing so much there. I did actually go into Ramona's computer. There is nothing there on the desktop. We were there for hours. And what I found in the cloud um on our council's website is extensive and none of that is on the computer, but at least we didn't lose it. It is in the cloud. Thank you.
Can I just um respond to that, Ms. Green? Well, I find that kinda disturbing and all, you know, um, the council, I mean, who went in and besides yourself and saw this because this was reported back to the council that there was a visit and y'all looked into the computer. Uh, because I I I really found that kind of interesting that it's not there. When I saw with my two eyes and some other people from the district, which I will not name though, saw it too because she literally showed it to us and she backed it up in the crowd and it was backed up onto that desktop. Because her clear words was that this is the only thing that will stay. And she needed to get it out a DOE email before it was deleted and deactivated, which she did successfully do. And it was on that computer. So I I I'm sad in to hear that, but thank you for that.
No, you're welcome. And I can speak to that, too. Um, generally, when you're closing down an email for an employee, then they, when they're saving something, it goes into a cloud. Um, so when, in the email that you're referring to where it says transfer of records, that's why I had responded to you and to Mr. Spencer to ask, did we get the records? Cause I was trying to find out where they were. And this was before um uh the trend, this was before I went to the office visit where we were stuffing the bags and getting prepared for the end of the year and printing things. I, you know, I'm a troubleshooter, so I try to make sure we don't lose anything. So those things were not available. And luckily, they are still in the cloud. So maybe she transferred it to the cloud versus on the physical desktop so that it could be accessed through Outreach, et cetera, because it is linked through um OneDrive.
Uh, it, not to go back and forth, but uh she transferred it to the desktop in the cloud. And I'm also computer savvy and I watched her do it. And like I said, there were some other people from the district who observed her do it as well, too. She literally showed us. And here it is only in the cloud, like I said, that's kind of interesting. But we ain't gonna go back.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence, we can always vote or something to just download it back to the desk. I mean, it's just in the cloud, which is efficient. We could really, it's amazing information that we all can really use, but if if people want, like, I don't mind going to the office one day and just, or telling you guys how to put it back on the desktop or back somewhere where it will always be accessible and we don't have to worry about if the AA leaves these different items and passwords and we lose listservs and things of that nature, something where we could be a little bit more tight so that it, we don't lose anything.
Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Spencer.
In the interest of time, um, if I'm allowed to do so, Co-President Green, uh taking Treasurer Angel and Mr. Lawrence's uh comments to to heart, I'd like to put up a motion to uh table this discussion until our calendar meeting, the eighteenth, where uh you yourself and Co-President Si can just bring, present to the council how to resolve this, um, how as leaders of this council, how you would like uh input in terms of getting this information accessible. Like I said, uh, this council will be going through an election season in five months. Uh, so I put up, my motion is to uh continue this conversation on information in the cloud that the council needs at our next uh calendar meeting, uh eighteenth of January, where Co- the Pres- Co-presidents will update the council and our constituents' next steps to get this information. So that's my motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Spencer. I was just gonna say who seconded it. I sounded like, sounded like Councilmember Lawrence?
That's the wrapping. I got a motion following that one.
All right. So uh it was moved by Councilmember Spencer and seconded by Councilmember Lawrence. All right, Ms. Montalvan, can we get a roll call vote?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I have this written down correctly. Table the discussion of information stored on the cloud till our next calendar meeting on January eighteenth, where co-presidents will present. I I kinda lost the end there.
Where Co- where the co-presidents will present to the council and the public next steps to uh, next steps uh toward getting access to this information, who who's authorized, so, so on and so forth, but the co-presidents will present to the council and to the public next steps to get this information.
Sorry, just bear with me, writing it down. Okay, so the motion I have is to table the discussion of information stored on the cloud to our next calendar meeting on January eighteenth, where the co-presidents will present to the council and public the next steps to get the information.
Is that correct, Councilmember Spencer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and I'm starting the roll call vote now. Ms. Christy Angel?
Yes.
Ms. Constance De See Do?
Yes.
Ms. Celia Green?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia Jewitt? Ms. Jewitt? Okay, she might have stepped away. Ms. Joanne Jones? Ms. Jones?
Um, oh, okay, I see Ms. Jones. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, I couldn't get to this mute button. I'm, my apologies.
Not a problem. It happens to all of us. All right, so go ahead, um, Councilmember Montalvan.
Mr. Shemel Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Christy Montalvan, yes. Mr. Angel Morales?
Yes.
Mr. Craig Spencer?
Yes.
And Ms. Amy Ming Si?
Yes.
Okay, and I just wanna check one more time. Ms. Jewitt, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I just had to get to the button. Yes, I'm voting yes. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. So I have ten votes for yes and the motion has passed.
Thank you, Councilmember Montalvan. All right, so moving along. All right, so uh a discussion on CCD seventy-fives, December business and ca- well, calendar meeting, because we actually didn't have the business meeting. Uh, calendar meeting, uh two thousand twenty-two, many interactions. Uh, five minutes, not, okay, Mr. Lawrence, go ahead.
Yeah, before we go to the next subject, uh I stated I had a motion to follow behind the one that was just passed.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so um I make a motion that um when um we get the time, myself, Mr. Spencer, you and Amy, that we come into that office and do a thorough um um walkthrough. Therefore, we could compare notes. And uh I I think that should be done sooner than later. Therefore, we can see what's still there and what's missing before, before the new council comes in. I think that needs to happen. And any other council member who would wish to come in and be part of it.
Okay, can I get a second?
Um, Mr. Lawrence, can you, I said, can you amend it? Um, just that we'll give the public uh an update on, cause my schedule, you know, was unstable. Um, hopefully I have Wednesday and Thursday off next week. So I can do that before our calendar meeting. So I would ask you to amend your uh motion to that if it's not gonna happen, the eighteenth before our calendar meeting will update the public in terms of when's it, when will happen. Um, so if you can amend your uh amendment, your motion to that, I'll second it.
No, I didn't put no timeframe on it. I said before the end of the term. So therefore, it's it's done before, at least before our June meeting, we should be able to do it. That's what I will say.
So then I second, I second it.
Okay, seconded, but, I'm sorry, by Mr. Spencer. Uh, Councilmember Angel, go ahead.
Is it possible to amend that to, I'm losing my train of thought, um. Could you read the the amendment for me again? I'm sorry, I mean, the motion for me again, it was a part that I wanted to. Could we uh, could we add the inventory? There was inventory that was done right after our end of the year, so that would be something very good to compare and contrast with. If anything would be missing, it would not be showing up. It wouldn't, you know, if it was on that list and then it's missing, then you have a definite gauge and baseline of what we said was there or what, you know, when uh President, Co-President Si was able to do the inventory and share the pictures and the list and everything with everyone. At least we have a baseline for what should be there or what we may have used, might need to replace, et cetera.
Okay, so Councilmember Angel, Councilmember Spencer, do you, it's, sorry, it was Lawrence. Councilmember Lawrence, do you wanna amend your um motion to include what Councilmember Angel has just requested?
I I couldn't hear what she was saying, but I know she said something about uh um thing was done by um Co-President Scott, uh Amy, on something. So if she can.
Talking about inventory. She was talking about inventory. Uh, uh.
Yeah, that would all be, that would all be included in there. So whatever I have on my list that I know I love, was left there, and then whatever is on this set. So with the two lists, we have two inventory. Yeah, we could use both, no, yeah, not this one, both.
All right. Um, is that okay with you, Councilmember Angel?
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. All right. Okay, so.
I still, I still second it, Co-President Green.
Okay, all right. So it was moved by Councilmember Lawrence, seconded by Councilmember Spencer. Uh, and Ms. Montalvan, are we ready to have a roll call?
Okay, just give me a second to finish writing this.
No problem.
Okay, this is what I have. A walkthrough of the Citywide Council for District Seventy-Five office will take place between co-presidents, former co-presidents, and any council member who would like to attend, where contents and inventory are assessed and reported, and this will take place by the June meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, starting the roll call vote now. Ms. Christy Angel?
Yes.
Ms. Constance De See Do?
Yes.
Ms. Celia Green?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia Jewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Joanne Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shemel Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Christy Montalvan, yes. Mr. Angel Morales?
Yes.
Mr. Craig Spencer?
Yes.
And Ms. Amy Ming Si?
Yes.
Okay, we have ten votes for yes. The motion has passed.
Thank you, Councilmember Montal- Montalvan. You're on second. You're ready. All right, so uh, yeah. Did we, uh, sorry. The discussion of the CCD seventy-five December calendar meeting, December two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, calendar meetings, directions.
Chair Green, that was actually me and it was just to go over the insights and the Zoom stuff, just so I could make sure everyone knew the accuracy. So I have accomplished um that portion for, unless somebody else wanted to speak on it. Um, a lot of things did happen, but I just wanted to make sure those two points from that, the points from the insights and what was going on with Outreach was noted from December and then the uh Zoom, et cetera, from January. So those points have been covered uh for me.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Angel. Does anyone else have? Craig, go ahead. Uh, Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Co-President Green. Um, since the door is open, um, and um I was in the middle of serving dinner uh to my family um toward the, in the middle of the meeting. Um, so the, I I had some time to, I couldn't really respond and uh what I'm trying to say is um in reference to yeah, tread lightly, Craig, tread tread lightly. Um, I would hope uh Co-President Si and Co-President, I understand, Co-President Si, you had stepped away for, to tend to your children. I respect that. Um, the exchange that happened during, the unfortunate exchange that happened during um the public comments section, I hope uh that we, as a council, um, but that would have to be through the co-presidents because I don't run, you know, only co-presidents run a meeting. I just hope that it doesn't get to uh something um that can be misinterpreted. Uh, because we're all here in the same space in terms of being here for our our our, for our community, our 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 children, our parents, empowering our parents. Um, and like I said, tread in lightly, cause um we have passions, we have challenges outside of this space. um, and like I said, tread lightly, because, um, we have passions, we have challenges outside of this space, um, so I just want to use this opportunity, and I thank you, um, co-president Green, co-president Tsai, for this opportunity, and hopefully, at, uh, this coming, uh, calendar meeting on eighteenth, and future calendar meetings, that public comments, if it's getting where it could be misinterpreted, we nip it in the bud, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spencer, Councilmember Angel, go ahead.
I did want to piggyback, since, um, I was one of the two council members who, um, the emails were sent in, who said that we were attacking and, um, stalking or violating the parent in some type of way, I would encourage anyone who has not listened to the December meeting to listen to it, I definitely don't want any parents to feel any type of way from our delivery of information that we give, um, and so, moving forward, I do and have talked to our council about making sure that we have standing rules, so that we can make sure that our council, you know, has our rules, the parents who visit and come to our meetings has the rules, so that we all can have a pleasant exchange, so that we can do the work that we need to do, um, on the council, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Angel. Hey, are there any other council members that have any other, lots of, for us, any, any other comment on this topic before we move on to the next thing? Okay, Councilmember.
Co-president Grant, I would just like to say, um, that, um, to encourage parents in the community to reach out to the council directly if they have a concern or an issue, or something with their school, or their, um, child's concerns, um, there is multiple accesses for families to reach us, uh, through, you know, all of our social platforms like Facebook and Twitter, Instagram, that, uh, Councilmember Angel has, uh, supported, helping making sure that they are, you know, active, um, also our council's website, which is CCDseventyfive.org, and the council's YouTube, that, uh, Councilmember Angel has worked really hard to upload all the public meetings, um, onto, so, you know, just want to encourage, um, the community that, uh, if you want to just be involved, like, you know, what parent engagement means is just, you know, trying to find the, um, avenues to, to reach out to us, or even to president's council, we have, uh, president council executive members here, uh, that support, um, the council and as well as theirs, so there's many different ways, and it's to help support a community and to thrive and succeed, so just wanted to put out there, uh, that, you know, with every little thing, please do, um, and wanted to appreciate president's council's support as well, uh, since the president, our president's council is here in this space, and that we keep and maintain, uh, the respect, um, as adults, um, and just making sure that if there are personal things, uh, that are said in a public comment, um, just, you know, be careful that, you know, these are, these are triggers sometimes for, um, people that may have gone through trauma, so just wanted to be openly about public meetings and the support that we've received and we want to offer to community, thank you, co-president Green, uh, move, go forward with the, the meeting.
Thank you, co-president Tsai. Uh, is there any other business? Alright, so I have one, I would like, uh, to suggest, uh, because I don't think we did, and I saw that you, you put in an email before, uh, that we vote to have the, the meeting for the eighteenth, which is covered under the extension of the suspension of open meetings law, uh, the one for the calendar meeting, sorry, for the eighteenth of January, that we vote to have that virtual, um.
I second that, co-president Green.
But actually, you have to make the motion, because I, I can't chair the meeting and make the motion.
That's true, uh, so I motioned that, uh, our next calendar meeting for this council, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, from six thirty to nine P M., uh, be held virtually, uh, since the state law allows us to do so, since opening law, open meetings law is suspended, uh, and it falls along that, uh, so, to put it in a nutshell, Christie, uh, vote to have January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three's calendar meeting be virtual. That's my motion.
Councilmember Spencer, alright, so it's moved by Councilmember Spencer, and seconded by Councilmember Lawrence.
Are you ready to vote?
Yep, we are.
Okay, so we are voting to have our January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three calendar meeting virtual due to the suspension of open meetings law. Ms. Christie Angel?
Yes.
Ms. Constance Asiedu?
Yes.
Ms. Celia Green?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia Jewett?
Yes.
Ms. Joanne Jones?
Yes.
Mister Shemel Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Christie Montevan, yes. Mister Angel Morales?
Yes.
Mister Craig Spencer?
Yes.
And Miss Amy Ming Tsai?
Yes.
We have ten votes for yes, the motion has passed.
Thank you, Ms. Montevan. Alright. Now, the other, one second. Yeah, I'm going to ask. Alright, co-president Tsai, uh, I know that the SCA had agreed to come to do the presentation, is that still the case on the eighteenth?
That's the last confirmation they said, and they, I did reach out to them, um, in regards to the materials and, uh, any pamphlets beforehand, so they will be, I was, uh, confirmed that they will share it, um, before the meeting, before the presentation.
Okay, uh, one second. Alright, um, the other question I have is, alright, so, the eighteenth is our calendar meeting, it will be virtual, and, uh, SCA is doing the presentation, and there was something else that one of council members asked to add to that meeting, I don't remember what it was, I don't know, off the top of my head, one second, let me go back to. Oh, uh, I would like to add, if we can, provided that, um, we get the clearance from SCA, uh, if we can, add the top five votes to that agenda for SCA, if, again, um, if, again, SCA validates the request, to have that top five votes. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Spencer.
Also, um, as a reminder, co-president Green, like Treasurer Angel said, um, upon, uh, uh, authorization from SCA, that, um, the list be compiled to the rest of the council, so they can review and vote, uh, appropriately on the eighteenth, with SCA's approval. And, uh, also, um, in conjunction with, if I'm not available in conjunction with my co-chairs, um, Assidu and, uh, Lawrence, with the capacity committee. Make sure their input is in. Because I know, like I said, my schedule is all over the place.
Okay.
Chair Green, do we, uh, we don't really necessarily need to vote for the items to go on the agenda, we can just put them on the agenda to discuss.
Yeah, no, but I want to give people a heads up, let's put that on the agenda, and if, if, again, we have the SCA, um, bond button, in terms of if they will pick it on the eighteenth, because that's kind of important, too, if they're not willing to do that, then we have to think of something else. But at least we would have voted for it to go on to this agenda, if nothing else. Uh, Mister, Councilmember Spencer, I see your hand.
So then, uh, are, do, so should I put up a motion for that to be on the, the agenda for the eighteenth, would you like me to do that, co-president?
Yeah, please.
Okay, Treasurer Montevan, so I motioned that, um, and guide me, co-president Green, so I motioned that, um, on the agenda for January eighteenth, for our calendar meeting, uh, that, um, uh, the addition to the agenda is that this council, um, will be able to vote on the, uh, the top five choices with the SCA's approval, that we can do it at that time, um, uh, uh, in advance of that, uh, that the council has that list in a, a legible format, in advance of the eighteenth, upon SCA's approval. Alright, so let me backtrack, so, my motion is, um, to, it's two things, to add to the agenda that this, on the eighteenth, uh, of January, that we vote on the top, the council's top five choices for the SCA, and that the list for the councilable, council to review be, uh, submitted before that, uh, at least forty-eight hours before that, upon the SCA's approval, of that vote being taken on the eighteen. Co-president Green, did I?
You, you got everything, but I'd like to ask you to amend it to twenty-four, just so that we can make sure we got everything.
Alright, twenty-four hours.
Because there's still stuff coming in.
Right.
Thank you. Alright, uh, you, you are moving that, and who is seconding?
I second it.
Thank you, Mister Lawrence. Alrighty, Ms. Angel, go ahead.
Quick question, the, with, with the motion that I made with the, with this, and the motion that, um, Mister Spencer is making, are we only just adding in the, that it be turned in with the forty-eight hours before the date or whatever, they seem kind of similar, I just wanted to make sure we weren't, um, voting on the same thing twice.
Hmm, uh, we said twenty-four, we narrowed it to twenty-four, you amended it to twenty-four, and, um, I'm confused now, say that again, Ms. Angel, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I made, I made the motion already about the top five and the SCA and the, um, possible date after, if we get permission, um, but the consideration, I think, what I was asking here is Mister Spencer just adding in that timeframe that we can get it, so that we can review it, and is it just going to be twenty-four hours before the meeting, or is it like forty-eight hours before the meeting, so we actually can go through and have time as council members to go through the list?
Hmm, we adjusted it to twenty-four, but I think the addition that Mister Spencer actually added to what you had said was that the co-chairs, uh, in his stead, in case he's not there, Mister Lawrence and Miss Assiedu could be, um,
Okay.
Included in that, so their, their, their names are included in the motion.
Also, um, I'm sorry, co-president Green, I don't mean to speak out, also Treasurer Angel, that it's, the difference between, the other difference between my motion and yours is that yours was a postponement, um, mine is actually that it get added to the agenda for next Wednesday, upon the, uh, SCA's approval. So, uh, yeah, it, it was, you know, a kind of piggyback off of you. You know, great minds think alike, right?
Long as we get it done and we serve the public, we're, we're doing good.
Okay, um, Councilmember Montevan, are you ready for a roll call?
Yep, I just want to go over the motion and make sure it's correct, I have that the agenda for the January eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting should include a vote on the top five SCA choices with their approval, and that the council should have the list at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Uh, yes, but you left out Mister Lawrence and Mister and Miss, I'm sorry, Mister Lawrence and Miss Assiedu is one of the things, the two things that, the two people that.
I didn't hear their names listed when he was reading his motion, so if he wants, if you.
You want to restate that part, Craig?
Well, that, yeah, within twenty-four hours, uh, with the, uh, feedback from, uh, uh, Mister Lawrence and Miss Assiedu in my place, just in case I'm not available, as co-chairs of the, uh, capacity committee.
Okay, so the agenda for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three should include a vote on the top five SCA choices with their approval, and the council should have the list at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting with feedback from co-chairs.
Assiedu and Lawrence.
And, okay. Is that correct?
That is.
Okay, good. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Christie Angel?
Yes.
Ms. Constance Asiedu?
Yes.
Ms. Celia Green?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia Jewett?
Yes.
Ms. Joanne Jones?
Yes.
Mister Shemel Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Christie Montevan, yes. Mister Angel Morales?
Yes.
Mister Craig Spencer?
Yes.
And Miss Amy Ming Tsai? Yes. Okay, we have ten votes for yes, the motion has passed.
Thank you, Ms. Montevan. Okay. Okay, one second. Alright, are there any other issues anyone else has that they want to speak about before we go to the vote for the candidates? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mister Spencer, I didn't realize your hand was up.
Uh, yeah, so, um, like I said, my, not to beat a dead horse, but, um, I wanted to, uh, 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 I wasn't at the last meeting, I don't know, and I haven't had a chance to check the, this transcript, but, um, are we, um, is it on the agenda for the eighteenth in terms of, um, I don't know if this is appropriate time right now, but the, um, I know, uh, uh, Councilmember Assiedu was, um, in reference to, um, code of conduct approvals, and, um, uh, I think, um, that's been a longstanding issue, I wanted to know, uh, if this is the time or space to, i- if we could get an update on that and try to get that approved, it's, it, I mean, like I said, we're in a voting season, and, um, we really, hopefully, we can get that, we, we need to put a priority, get that finalized before the next council's elected, to have some code of conduct that they could use, uh, next, uh, starting the next term, so, um, can, um, can anybody comment on that in terms of where we stand, and, uh, yeah, thanks.
So, do you want me, like, uh, hang on for one second, Mister Spencer, because there's also two other hands up, um, Mister Lawrence, is it referenced the same thing, or?
No, mine was different.
Huh? I'm sorry.
Different, different.
Alright, so could you wait for one second, so, Constance, do you have an update?
Hello?
Constance, go ahead.
Can you hear me? I did resend out the, um, the prior Article Ten with the changes for members to review again, because it is going to be presented for a vote in this meeting, when it was initiated, it was stated that it will be presented for a vote in this meeting, and it was read the last business meeting, for the council to vote on. So, cleaned up version can be sent out that will be voted on. So, cleaned up version can be sent out that will be voted on before the meeting.
Councilmember Lawrence, you go ahead, and then Councilmember Angel, Councilmember Lawrence, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I wanted to know that you have an update, that you were supposed to provide an update whether or not you was able to access the email, yeah, and also.
I did, go ahead, go ahead.
And also have every other council member there able to access the emails, because there was a vote of this at the last meeting.
Alright, so I did see some replies before, but I'm gonna let other councilmembers speak for themselves. I did not try this week, this last, within this last week to go in the, in lot, so I will do the so after now, now, probably tomorrow, um, but I know, should I take it again? Somebody said, thank this husband who's not here, so, um, when she is on, I guess next time she'll corroborate that she gotten in. Uh, anyone else want to answer that question? Any other council member?
I do just want to, just for time's sake, when, um, as per bylaws and Robert's rules for special meetings, you can only discuss the topics that you put on the flyer, and so we're going past the agenda into additional topics in time, and so for me, myself, we're thirty minutes over, and I can't stay much longer, and I know we still have to go into executive session, so, um, I'm hoping that we can put a bow on this, since we have discussed the topics that were advised to the public that we were going to do, so that we can move into the executive, um, assistant vote. I, I honestly, for myself, I just can't stand too much longer, that's all, I just might to put that out there.
Okay. Um, thank you, Councilmember Angel, and for giving us the time as well, and Councilmember Lawrence, go ahead.
Yeah, Ms. Green, on this was given as a agenda item. Uh, I brutally excited to, and it was mentioned at our last meeting, and, uh, you know, we saw, so this should have been on the, uh, up there in the email.
Okay, but it does say other issues on the, on, on the agenda anyway, so, you know.
Okay.
Alright, now there's one other question I've got to ask before we go into, um, the AA thing, to, uh, the vote for the AA, um, we still have to come up with a date, because the SCA is presenting on the eighteenth. We still need to come up with a date for a, what do you call it again, for the public hearing, though, which is a separate thing, so, um, I will, I don't know, I guess, once I talk to SCL, put out some dates in the email, uh, and hopefully we'll have an update by the eighteenth, so we know we're ready. But I'm just telling people to be prepared, it will be another meeting. Alright, that being said, um, at this time, uh, we need to discuss, as a council, council members only, the the candidates for, um, Administrative Assistant, narrowing it down, and voting. Uh, the voting does happen in the public. However, uh, we do have to go into executive sessions to discuss the, um, candidates in order to narrow down. So, I am going to say to the public, you have the choice, uh, we are not, I didn't mean it, uh, that you can stay on, uh, or, but, um, we will probably have to go to, we will definitely have to go around, so, executive session in order to do so. So, I need someone to ask for motion for that.
I motion to go into executive session to discuss the appointment of, um, uh, this council's Administrative Assistant candidates. Vote on it, discussion on who to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Who's gonna second?
Second.
That sounded like Ms. Angel, that was you, right?
It was, it was me, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alright, and seconded by Councilmember Angel.
Okay. Ready to vote?
A roll call, uh-huh, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Christie Angel?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Constance Asidu?
Yes.
Ms. Celia Green?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia Jewett?
Yes.
Ms. Joanne Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shemell Lawrence? Mr. Lawrence? Or did he say he was dropping off?
Nah. He might have. No, he's, he's still, no, he thumbs up, he said yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Mr. Montevan, yes, Mr. Angel Morales?
Yes.
Mr. Craig Spencer?
Whoops, yes.
And Ms. Amy McSigh? Yes. Okay, we have ten votes for yes, the motion has passed.
Co-President Si, can you create a breakout? Um, so that we can all go in to, with the council members, sorry. Councilmember, to, the, like I said, the audience is welcome to stay, because we won't close the meeting now, but, uh, know that we may be in there for a while. So, um, thank you for participating and coming and for your support.
Andrea, are you there?
Okay.
All right, so we are back. Thank you for those who waited. Uh, you are surely troopers and we're gonna have an update from the co-chair of the hiring committee. Ms. Patricia Jewett, councilmember Jewett.
Good evening everyone and thank you so much for hanging in there. So our update is this, we have a candidate. We will be making them an offer and everything will be announced next at our next um calendar meeting next week. Hopefully we'll have some good news to share. Thank you everybody for your time.
Thank you councilmember Jewett. Thank you to you and to councilmember Acedu for chairing the hiring committee and for doing a lot of the groundwork.
Hope she gets some rest.
All right, so uh does any council member have any other uh business they hope to discuss? Or they'd like to add agendas or anything like that?
I know what I'd like to add.
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, is that you motioning or is that?
Yeah, that's me motioning and and.
All right, so it was motioned by Patricia Jewett. And it was seconded by uh Mr. Shamel.
Mr. Lawrence, yeah. He seconded while I was putting it out there.
Does anyone opposed to this motion or does anyone abstain from this motion? I'm gonna make sure we still have um enough people. One second, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, does anyone oppose or anyone abstain? Hearing non? Thank you, have a good evening, we will hope to see.
Well, everybody, good night.
Okay, the eighteenth of January.
Good night.
Stay safe everybody, God bless.
Bye bye.
Take care.